Good morning. It is one minute before nine, but we will go ahead and get started. If you'd please rise. Before Trustee Stonecypher leads us in the invocation, I would like to take this moment to ask for a moment of silence on behalf of Bill Horn, the city manager of City of Clearwater, who so unexpectedly passed away this weekend.
Lord, we thank you for the blessings that were given in this life. We're reminded yet again of the unknowns that exist while we're here. We ask that you would let us be joyful in every moment that we have. We're reminded right now of the excitement we do find here with the start of a new semester. All the new students and returning students coming on to campus for the first time in a long time as a group. I pray for their success, that they can learn something new, that they can work towards graduation and new careers, new jobs, and new hopes in this community. I pray for our faculty, for all the hard work that they do to mold these lives and to teach these students. I thank you for their service and for all that they do for this college and institution. We thank you for the administrators that are here, the leadership we have at this school. Lord, I pray for this Board of Trustees, that you would help us make the right decisions, even the hard decisions, so that we can be a lasting institution for the next 100 years. We thank you so much for the people who give so much to St. Petersburg College. And I ask that, in this time where it seems like everything is contentious, that you would fill us with grace and mercy for others rather than condemnation, and that we can move forward with positive dialogue with each other. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the August meeting of the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College. And thank you all for those joining us virtually and for those in the room. We first have some recognitions, so retirement resolutions. Ms. Mary Hanlon.
Ms. Mary here.
Yay! Welcome!
Come on up. Don't be shy. We've been working together a long, long time.
That's right, sister.
That's right. So, resolution. Whereas Mary Hanlon, a faculty member and inspirational leader in the Physical Therapist Assistant Program at the Caruth Health Education Center for 30 years, began her career at St. Petersburg College in 1991. And whereas Ms. Hanlon throughout her career has exceeded expectations as a faculty member, college employee, and mentor. A valuable team player, she easily connected with colleagues and students to ensure success for everyone. Students were motivated and challenged to reach their highest level of proficiency. She promoted creativity in her classroom and fostered critical thinking, mutual respect, and professionalism in her teaching. And whereas Ms. Hanlon played a crucial role in the establishment of the Physical Therapy Clinic at St. Petersburg College, the clinic enables students to gain practical, hands-on experience in their chosen profession and serves the needs of the community. Whereas, Mary Hanlon has inspired others to learn and grow each day. She has positively impacted the lives of hundreds of new clinicians and their families throughout her career, which has included active memberships and professional organizations for more than 35 years. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Mary Hanlon and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees of St. Petersburg College this 17th day of August 2021. Mary. Woo-hoo!
I did that.
You did that.
Well, it's been an honor and a privilege to be part of this family. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you get everybody? Should we be in the middle? She's been in front.
Mr. Leonard, there he is.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good.
Good, I'm good. Resolution. Whereas George Leonard began his career as a business instructor, teaching business and business law on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus of St. Petersburg College in 1976. And whereas Mr. Leonard transitioned to management courses and became one of the college's initial computer literacy instructors, sometimes learning along with his students. Later, he taught more advanced computer application courses as the Microsoft Office Suite became available. And whereas Mr. Leonard added accounting to his teaching schedule after completing additional graduate work in accounting to supplement his MBA. For 15 years, he served as a faculty sponsor of Circle K, connecting students with business professionals and participating with them in community service projects. And whereas Mr. Leonard, a member of the Florida Institute of Certified Public Accountants and the American Institute of Certified Bookkeepers, has positively impacted the lives of numerous students for the past 45 years, urging them by example to become lifelong learners and to always be open to learning new skills. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by George Leonard and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College, this 17th day of August 2021. George Leonard. Good job.
Well, it has been a long and profitable career, and I thank everybody that has helped me along throughout all of this. And it seemed like the longer I was here, the more help I needed. But I am very grateful.
And we're grateful for you. Thank you so much. You guys wanna come over so we can... Someone wanna come on this side? George in the middle? There we go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I do think the board needs to formally adopt those resolutions if there's a motion...
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations to your both. What an inspiration for everyone. SPC Spotlight, Mrs. Robin Bauer Miller is here, our new faculty governance chair.
We have the honor of having Professor Miller with us to help us build the bridges between administration and the faculty and continue to grow with us together. She has been with the college full-time for 34 years, and she's a member of the Southern State Communication Association where she's the chair of the Community College Division. So we know that she's a mover and a shaker. She's been the past president of FGO at Clearwater, and so the FGO group is not new to her. And she's also been a leader of Fatihita Kappa, which is our student honor society. And so what I really appreciate about Robin is that she's actively participating at SPC and being a part of the change that we want to see. So again, welcome, Robin. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much for serving in that role. It's so important.
It is.
And now we are thrilled to also introduce Mr. Darrell Wright Green, our new Chief Human Resources and Talent Officer. Welcome.
Welcome, welcome. So, Mr. Wright Green comes with 15 years of experience, true HR experience and leadership, which is what we were looking for as we move forward. He's coming from Dallas County Community College, so he understands the college system and what we do here in Florida. And he's done a lot of work in overseeing transitions and changes and talent acquisitions and getting people here at the college, building processes and policies and systems that connect to make sure that we have a good employee experience. He has two bachelor's degrees, one in criminal justice and one in telecommunications, both from Michigan State. And he holds a master's degree in business administration from Adana University. And so we're very glad to have Darrell on board, and I'm looking forward to some good success with the college going forward.
And now, this is our annual organizational meeting, so if you all would bear with us as we go through some required organizational items here this morning before we get to the meet. So, the first thing, and Ms. Gardner is very good of us, although I need to wipe my glasses off here so I can read it. We actually have a script that we need to follow because it's a very formal process. So, let's see. The Florida statutes requires each year at its first regular meeting after July 1st that the College Board of Trustees shall organize by electing a chair whose duty it shall be to preside at all meetings, to call special meetings of the board, and to attest to actions of the board. And the board shall also elect a vice chair to act as chair during the absence or disability of the chair. So pursuant to this requirement, I now open the floor for nominations for the chair of the Board of Trustees for the 2021-2022 fiscal year.
May I be chair?
Yes, sir.
Move that we make Vice Chair Tommy Kidwell chair of our Board of Trustees?
Second.
And if there are no further nominations, I declare the nominations closed. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Kidwell. There we go. You wanna sit here and we'll trade after this?
Sit here.
We'll trade after we finish this.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we make Jason Butts Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees here at St. Petersburg College.
That was very quick.
I know how to keep work away from me. I know how to keep work away from me, Mr. Chair.
Do we have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, before we move to the next phase, I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, I'd really like to thank our outgoing Chair Katie Cole for all of her hard work and diligence. Katie, you've done an excellent job, as you always do in everything that you do, but I'm most proud to say that I started with you because you've walked us through some very tough and difficult times at this college, and I think you've done an excellent job. And I want to say from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate the job that you've done thus up to this point. I know you're not going anywhere, but I just thought that you needed to... I mean, we went through budget cuts and trying to get students back into college and buildings being built and turmoil in some areas, and I mean, I think you've done an excellent job. And you know, my dad often tells me when the pot gets hot, you can tell who's cool in the kitchen, and you've been very cool in the kitchen. So I appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also have a quick presentation. Trustee, give and stole everything that... I was gonna say, I think you saw this and you just decided to do that, but on behalf of St. Petersburg College, the college family, our students and community, and myself, you have been my ride or die person. I can call you anytime, any day, and you pick up. And you've never sweated. Even when I was frazzled, you were cool, ready to roll. Time to hear what we should do. And that's the role of a chair, and you have been like a super chair. And we just want to thank you with a small token of our appreciation, and we really would like, I don't know if our photographer is still here, a picture with you and the board and the plaque of appreciation. And we really do appreciate you, and I know you're not going anywhere, so I'm glad that you're here. Thank you for everything. Thank you.
I wanted to say that next to Katie, so I looked tall. I was saying, yeah. I looked real tall, you know?
Sorry.
Wait, let me take a glass. Before I switch chairs with chairperson Kidwell, I did want to say a couple things, but I will tear up, so I barely made it through that. So, St. Petersburg College is a treasure, and it is a treasure because of each of you in the room, because of each of our students, and because of the people who spend so much time working diligently to provide for our community. And I think that's the thing that I've learned the most in my four years on this board, and especially in the past two years as the chairperson, is that while every day, each of you all are working so hard for our students, the impact is really for our community as a whole. And watching students graduate and seeing the celebrations for our first-time-in-college graduates, for generations of families who show up to celebrate success, for our employment numbers, and seeing, I will never forget, my first week on the board, I attended the scholarship luncheon for St. Petersburg College Foundation, and I sat with a woman, and I'm sure I've told this story many times before, who had worked at Raymond James for years, for 25 years. And she worked in the IT department in a job as an assistant, and she got a new manager who said to her, "Is this what you want to do?" And she said, "Well, I don't have a college degree and I don't have any certificates, so it's what I can do." And he said, "No, I think there's other things you can do." And she enrolled in one of our certification programs and ended up graduating with us, and she had a scholarship through the foundation. And she received her certificate, and the day after she received her certificate, she walked into work and received a significant raise financially, simply because she had that piece of paper that she didn't know she could get and the knowledge that she gained. And I asked her if she was changing positions, and she said, "No, it's everything that I was doing, it's everything that I'll continue to do, but now I have a degree to say that I can be paid more to do that." And on one hand, it was sad for me that it took a degree to do that, but on the other hand, it was so wonderful that we can provide those opportunities seamlessly and with such diversity for people in our community to not just get their first job, but to move up and truly offer that hand up. The team at St. Pete College is beyond none. Our faculty navigating the past 18 months. As Dr. Williams always says, "You never waste a crisis," and we've sure seen our share of it the past four years, but especially the past two. The administration has been creative and nimble. Our support staff, you have been all in and been flexible. Student services, I mean, seeing the reports of how many touches that you've had with the students and really changing the way you do business in a way that we're going to capitalize on and benefit from forever. Our collegiate high school, more than ever, the growth that we've seen at the collegiate high school and the graduates there, and our foundation growth and our direct support organizations have really flourished even in spite of the pandemic. And of course, none of us would be doing any of this if it weren't for our students. Engaged in school and the community, and more and more, when I see the stickers on cars and the T-shirts around town, the excitement for our students to be, to call St. Pete College home. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve. I have learned so much from so many of you, and I certainly look forward to continuing our partnership.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Kidwell?
Oh, boy.
Welcome, Trustee Kidwell, Chair Kidwell, and Vice Chair Butts. We look forward to continuing a great relationship and moving things forward. Thank you for your leadership.
How do I follow that? Thank you, Chair Cole, for all that you've done, and thank you all for having me. I have no idea what to do now, so we're just gonna dig in and go from there. Before I get to any comments from the board, we do have a little business that we need to take care of, so my fellow board members are on duty to keep me on track and make sure we're taking votes when we need to and all of that. But I too am gonna read from the script because this is a little bit long. So let me start. This is going to be about the Board of Trustees' schedule moving forward. The Board of Trustees' rules and procedures requires the Board of Trustees to establish a schedule at its annual organizational meeting for its regular meetings for the college's fiscal year, including date, time, and location. I propose the following schedule for the fiscal year 2021-2022, which is attached. Unless otherwise scheduled, regular meetings of the board to take action on general business of the college shall occur on the third Tuesday of each month, starting at 9:00 a.m., right here at the EpiCenter. Meetings of the trustees as the governing board of directors of the St. Petersburg Collegiate High School Charter School shall be scheduled in accordance with the requirements of the Florida statutes. Properly noticed special meetings and workshops may be scheduled annually at this organizational meeting or scheduled throughout the year. I think we all have a copy of the schedule, but there are a few changes. We will be moving from 11 meetings to 10 meetings, two of which will be board workshops. And I guess I'm going to call for my first vote for approval of this new schedule. So if there is not any... What's that?
Move approval of the schedule?
Second. Any discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Next order of business is the appointment of representatives to our direct support organizations. I hereby appoint the following trustees to serve on the board of directors of each of the direct support organizations. For the St. Petersburg College Foundation, I would like to appoint trustee Nathan Stonecypher. And for the Institute of Strategic Policy Solutions, I would like to appoint trustee Devron Gibbons. We will also continue our relationships with both Leaper Ratner Museum and the Palladium. I guess we don't need appointments for those, but trustee Jason Butts has sort of stepped forward in the role that I had with Leaper Ratner, if that's okay. I would like him to be a liaison to the Leaper Ratner. And then trustee Katie Cole is going to step forward. We're going to try to create the same thing we have with Leaper Ratner at the Palladium, and I think trustee Cole will do a great job in that regard. So if everybody's okay with that, I would like to have a motion to approve those appointments.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Yes. Any discussion? Everybody good? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. So far, so good. I guess we're at the point where I make my first comments. I would like to say to everybody, first of all, trustee Cole did a great job, and that's a hard act to follow. I will do my best to be present and to listen and to, you know, do what we're supposed to do. I'm very honored to be sitting in this chair. I truly did not think I ever would be. I told Dr. Williams when I got on the board that this would never be occupied by me. She and Chair Cole both laughed at me, and here I am. I guess we haven't had a meeting in two months, but the thing I'd like to discuss, I guess, a little bit are some of the activities that I participated in with the college in the last two months, the summer. The first one was a state board of education meeting that was held at the Seminole Campus, which was a way bigger deal than I anticipated. The governor and his wife ended up showing up and speaking. Dr. Williams gave a great speech. We had a video, you know, accompanying her talk. Provost Strickland and his staff did an amazing job. I mean, the place was overrun with people. We had some protesters, we had standing room only. It was amazing. They actually held a chair for me in the front row, so that was awfully nice. But just a great showing for St. Pete College hosting the event, and I mean, the Seminole staff should be commended.
Yes.
The next thing was a little bit more fun. We had our St. Pete College Appreciation Night at the Clearwater Thresher's Game. I was able to hang out with trustee Butts and trustee Cole and Dr. Williams and several other people. I have a background in minor league baseball, which you may or may not know, going way back, it's been a long time. But minor league baseball is an amazing kind of place to hold an event like that, because I was able to bring both my kids. It's a family-friendly environment. It was, it's cheap. It's not like going to a major league base... It's not, it's not like going to a major league baseball game. And I can tell you from experience, the people on the field really appreciate the support. And most importantly, the camaraderie and the fun that we had in the stands was, honestly, was really, really a lot of fun. It's the first game I've been to in a little while, and I hope that we can do that moving forward. I mean, it was, it was a lot of fun. The last thing I'll say is tomorrow night, we have the Presidential Scholarship Ceremony. I will be attending that, so I will see many of you there. I look forward to doing that, and that's all I've got for today. So I open it up to any board members that have anything to say.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes from June, the meeting of June 15th.
Before we do that, Mr. Gibbons, I just have a couple of comments.
Sure.
I just, I wanted to echo what's already been said about trustee Cole. We're extremely grateful that you were sitting in that chair for two years through a lot of ups and downs at the college. And I wanted to personally say thank you for that. You relieved me of my duties, which I was very grateful of. You did a fantastic job. The college was in great hands with you. And as, as both Dr. Williams and Devron said, you handled every situation with grace and with ease and with a calm presence, and that's exactly what we need in that chair. And so I thank you for that. And it's been a privilege. I didn't know you before you were appointed to the Board. It's been a great, great couple of years getting to know you better. You're a wonderful human being, and we're happy to have you, and I'm glad you're still here. And now we all get to help Chair Kidwell out with his new position. And I did just wanna say a couple of words about our new chair. With Tommy Kidwell, it's not always gonna be pretty. We know that.
Definitely not prettier than the last chair.
They don't know that.
Chair Kidwell is one of my favorite people. I have known him for many, many years, well before he was appointed to this Board. He's going to do a fantastic job as chair for us. He will always have the best interests of the college at the center of his heart. I know he's a little apprehensive about stepping into this role, but Chair Kidwell, you're gonna do great, and we all got your back. And I'm excited to have you sitting there. So thank you for stepping up and serving in this capacity. And I'll just say, I did get a chance to go to the Welcome Titans event briefly, unfortunately, because it seems like all of a sudden, I'm sure you all are feeling the same thing, that the calendar is completely packed again with things going on. And so it feels like we were walking for a year, and now we're running again, which is good and bad. But I just wanted to thank everyone who participated in that. A great opportunity to bring the college together before the kickoff of a new semester, a new year. And I love the energy in the room. And as always, our staff put together a great event. And Dr. Williams, I know this new school year is gonna be a good one, and we have a lot to look forward to. And we're anxious to get going.
I'm with you.
And real quick, just wanna echo a lot of the same points that have already been made to trustee Cole. Thank you so much for, as I was introduced to the Board, being patient with me with all the questions. Really appreciate it, looking forward to working with you. Good luck to the new chairman. Don't count on your vice chair to be all that much help. Thank you, trustee Gibbons, for that nomination. I really appreciate that. Family and I also had an amazing time at the baseball game. It was great seeing you guys there, and look forward to the new semester.
I think we have the president's.
Well, Mr. Chair, before the motion, just honestly, I'm looking forward to working with you both. And I have to say, you know, I've been on this Board 18 years, 18 years or 19 years now, and I'm not, I don't think we've had a better Board. I think we have some really qualified people, people that care about the college. We work together in a good cohesive unit, and I'm looking really forward to working with our new chair and vice chair. And I look forward to helping you guys in any way, in any capacity that we can, and so that we can be successful. I think we have found a family at the college. You know, I tell people, I hate to say this publicly because I don't usually say it publicly, but I went to Florida and got my degrees and learned how to become, you know, an athlete and a man, but I went to FAMU and found a family. And I think that's why we're creating an environment of family at St. Petersburg College, especially with this Board. So I appreciate all of you very, very much. But yes, we're here to help you guys in any way or capacity. You'll be, you'll do fine, Vice Chair Butts, I'm sure. Just let the wrong thing come across your desk, and you'll be okay. You'll get, you'll, you'll know how to deal with it. And so looking forward to working with new leadership. And I can't say enough about Katie Cole and my main man right here, the stalwarts for what, doing what's right. And we didn't always agree, and we won't always agree. Just remember that. We won't always agree, but that doesn't mean we're at each other's throats. And I, I truly appreciate the fact that we can disagree and still move this college forward. So thank you so much. And then my motion, yes, is back on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before that motion, do we have the president's comments?
Yes.
Let's go there.
All right. Thank you. We're really proud to start the new year off strong. Everyone's doing what they need to do to move the institution forward. We have two new programs that we're offering this fall, a 23 credit hour medical device, networking, and cybersecurity certificate, and a 24 credit hour audio production and engineering certificate. And you may not know this, but our enrollment is really booming in short-term rapid credentials. People are trying to get a trade, get a job, they'll come back and get that degree. But right now, they're trying to get a good job. These are just two of the certificates that will help students be job-ready in in-demand type fields. One of our very own, Chris Littlewood, an instructional technology coordinator, was recently one of six people from across the state appointed by Governor Ron DeSantis to the Florida Independent Living Council. So we have one of our own on that council that's gonna help promote independence, full access, and informed choice for people with disabilities. So that's a big kudos to the college. I think we've already talked about the state Board of Ed meeting. I did get a text back from the commissioner who thought it was handled extremely well. So I was, I was very proud of that. We, at that meeting, we received notice that we were getting $61,000 from the state and some other scholarships. We had one of our very own students there highlighted with the commissioner to be awarded one of the scholarships. One of our own students, Alfonso, I'm gonna say it wrong, Mestry, Representative Venezuela, was an SPC online student this summer, and he took his final exam when he was in Japan. He took first place in the men's 400 freestyle and second men's 800 freestyle. So that was a big deal. Another online student, Robert Finke, took first place for the USA team in the men's 800 freestyle final. He also took his exams while training in Hawaii and competing in Tokyo.
Wonderful.
So we have, yes, that's a big deal.
Yeah.
Exactly. We talked about the Employee Appreciation Night. We had about 900 employees register for it. We're waiting to get with the group to find out how many attended. But what I really liked was I had a chance to meet families, had a chance to talk to people who I never met, those who are sharing their loved ones with the college, which I know is a huge sacrifice for all the work that's being done. And we got a chance to spend time with each other, and so that was good, to celebrate the good work of the college employees and to recognize them for the work that they have done. Welcome Titans was great. It was a face-to-face and virtual, so those who felt more comfortable online were able to be online, and those who wanted to come face-to-face did. And we highlighted our new strategic plan and gave kudos to the college family for the work done, recognized employees who earned higher degrees, which was a big treat, and those who are sharing in leadership. Sorry this is long, but I haven't seen you guys in a while. Also, I spent a week in Washington with the American Association of Community Colleges. I'm on their Board. We got a chance to spend time with the Secretary of Labor as well as the Secretary of Education. We learned what the goals were for AACC and what the challenges are for community colleges nationwide. I've been placed as the Chair of the Economic, the Economic Group, the Commission, which was interesting to be the Chair. So I'll be working more on economic and workforce for the nation of community colleges. So that's gonna be nationally for the community colleges. That's gonna be an exciting opportunity. And I'm also on the Policy and Advocacy Group for the AACC. So we'll be spending time in Washington and, and working out plans that way as well. So I was very proud to be in the room with some very smart and intentional folks. So that's what's happened, very small things since we met in June. That's my report.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Public comments. The meeting is now open for public comments. I guess I should have done that first. I don't have any public comment cards, so I guess, do we have any members of the public that would like to make a public comment? The public comment period is now closed. We are now at your motion, trustee Gibbons.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes for June, from June? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do we have, moving on, do we have a, Ms. Gardner, do we have a monthly report?
Yes. Good morning, Chair Kidwell, trustees, and Dr. Williams. Very briefly, I'd like to just draw your attention to the new law summary booklet on your table. This is the annual summary of some of the bills that passed during the last session. As you'll remember in our last meeting, ARID and Capital City did go through a summary of some of the bills that were impacting. This is kind of the finalized version of the summary. There's 13 bills that are listed in that booklet. The college continues to go through and review some of the things that we need to do to stay in compliance or to change policy, adjust things, and procedures. I wanted to let you know that the booklet is also online at the college's Board website or will be shortly, and that version will include the live links to both the bills and also to the revised statute, so that might also help in, in review of the summary. That's my report. Thank you.
Very good. Moving along, based on our strategic plan, we have a couple of presentations today. First up is Dr. Sabrina Crawford. We're going to be talking, or she's going to be presenting on the Spring and Summer 2021 Course Success Rates.
Well, congratulations, Chair Kidwell, Vice Chair Butts. Thank you very much, Pastor Cole, for all of your service and support over the years. We very much appreciate it. Good morning, trustees, Dr. Williams. I'm Sabrina Crawford. I'm the Associate Vice President of Institutional Effectiveness and Academic Services. And of course, we get to begin the year with some numbers. I have a couple of things I want to share with you this morning, and I'm going to start with a brief overview of the enrollment for fall, keeping in mind that we've just started yesterday, and we still have several other sessions, our express sessions and our eight-week two sessions to come down the line. As of the day before classes started, we were 8% down. This was equally distributed between, between both upper division and lower division, so it didn't seem like there was one or the other that was more affected. If you remember, last year, nationally, community colleges were down about 10%, and they're expecting a similar descent again this fall. And we're just trying to see where that baseline is going to end up as we move into our new normal. They did a survey of all the students who stopped out, and one of the things that they found, that 65% of the students who stopped out last year claimed that there was a COVID-related reason, whether it was unemployment, healthcare, childcare, mental health issues, et cetera. So we are not surprised that right now, students are feeling the same way. I think that as you, as I talk through the success rates, you're gonna see kind of a descent through our summer as students began to get exhausted, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So interestingly, when we look at the breakdowns of our fall enrollment, it is the same percentage-wise, although less, for our distribution between our males and our females, and the same distribution percentages for our new students, our new students, our returning students, and our continuing students. So what that means is that we're really doing a good job with what we're doing. It hasn't changed. Last fall, we actually had a bigger dissent in our new students. This is kind of across the board right now. All students are kind of feeling the same pain. I had an interesting conversation with Dean Demers, who was asking students, you know, why, as, as the deans are calling stop-out students at the college, why, what's going on? And the students were actually saying, these are continuing students, so they've been here, they're trying to continue on. And their response to her was, we know what it takes to take a full load of classes, and we're exhausted, and we just don't have it in us right now. We'll be back. We just can't do it right now. And I think that that really speaks to where students are. And this morning, I don't know if you read the Inside Higher Ed newspaper, but they had a response of the Beginning Community College Student Survey of Satisfaction. So these are brand-new students coming in, and what they realize is that mental health concerns for our entering classes are the highest it's ever been. Students are exhausted. They're, they're walking into classes as freshmen, knowing that they're going to need help supporting themselves mentally and physically to get through the semester. So something for us to keep in mind. Our biggest drops this fall are in our white student population. They're down 2%. Our Hispanic population is actually up 1%, and our black students is actually exactly the same as it was last fall. And the most interesting fact was that our full-time students, so students who are choosing a full-time load, is actually up 6%. That's unheard of for us. So whether they'll stay that way, whether they'll stop to drop classes as they start to realize what is expected, but right now, that's where that stands. So any questions on that? Okay, awesome. So let's talk a little bit about our success rates. You have two charts here. I'm just gonna talk about the one with the line graph on it. So this shows you three different things. In the middle, so this is the blue line, this is our annual course success rates, and it shows you three years. And you can see that in the 1920 year, we were actually at 80.5 success rates. So that means this number of students who actually got an A, B, or C, what's 80.5%. We had set a goal in our last strategic plan to hit 80.2, and we actually exceeded that a year ago. If you look at the 2021 numbers, you're going to see that the, that number is down a little bit lower. And just a one caveat around that is that we pulled this data the day after summer ended, and we have quite a few incomplete grades right now. So we expect that this column, the 2021 year for both summer and for the annual, will probably increase somewhere between 1% to 1.5%. And if you look at the bottom line, this is the red line, this is our spring success rates, you can see that we actually had a banner spring. We had probably one of the best springs that we've had in a long time. And our spring success rates are usually lower than our fall success rates. Students are starting to get tired, but you can see that we really pushed the bucket there for our spring, this, this past spring. And then the top line, the black line, this is our summer success rates. And you can see, we kind of hold steady year after year, and then we had a little bit of a dip. Again, we have quite a few incompletes. We won't have a final number for us until October. But something to consider about summer, first of all, our summer usually has a large percentage of transient students, and we didn't have. So a transient student is a student from another college who comes to us, they take one class during the summer either to get ahead, to retake a class if they didn't do well at their actual institution, then they go back to their originating institution. We didn't have that group of students. The group of students tends to be slightly higher academically, so that's one of our reasons. And then we also are now competing against all other institutions that are offering online education, so we have less of a pool to pull from, for our, our student body. So we already have low student enrollment, and low student enrollment means big fluctuations in success rates because any, any small change makes a big change in the numbers. So let's talk a little bit about spring. So spring is a, like I said, is a semester to really celebrate because we've been tracking our success gap between all students versus our black students for some time, as you're aware. And you can see that that, this past spring was actually a record year for us. Our black males, and that's all the little shapes at the bottom of the left-hand side, the circles and the star, that has to do with gaps on this slide. So our black male gap actually closed by 6.7%. That's huge. And our FTIC, our First Time in College Black Male Gap, so we have quite a few, you've heard about our African-American Male Initiative, that closed to single digits for the first time in forever. A few years ago, this was at 34%. We're now at 8%. So this is a moment to celebrate, and I just wanted to do like a little, little happy dance here about that, for all the great work that's been going on across the college to get our students to this point. However, when we looked at our female students, both our Hispanic students and our black females, they struggled the most this spring, and we know this because of what we're hearing from them. And they have very different needs. But I wanted to just tell a little bit of our story of our female students. Like most of our students, they do best in our baccalaureate programs. If a student comes back for our baccalaureate program, they know what to expect, they know, they're here for a reason, and they're They know they're here for a reason, and they're pretty dedicated. Same thing with face-to-face. We know we have greater success rates in face-to-face, although that gap is closing as well. Our biggest students, and the biggest need would be our black females. You can see in the middle circle that that gap actually increased, so it's down by 6.3%. So it's widening this last spring. But the good news is, is that in gateway classes, our females actually close that gap by 3%. This is kind of an indicator for future success. So students take their gateway classes earlier in the program, which means if that gap is closing, then they're more likely to persist, to stay with us and keep doing better. So that's kind of a long-term indicator of success right in the beginning. When we look at our summer success rates, on the other hand, we were exhausted. I think that's the best way to describe this summer success. The circles and the star at the bottom, this time is talking about changes in success rates themselves, not the gap. Our Hispanic students were the stars of our summer. They did great. They actually increased their success rates by a little bit over a half a percentage point. Our Hispanic males closed the gap and exceeded the gap by 10.2%. They did great. This small amount of students, big fluctuations, but this is the group of students that did the best. And our Hispanic students who took gateway classes, they actually closed their gap by 5.6%. So they did an amazing job. Our black students, both black males, females, and our Hispanic females, they were the ones who were more affected during this past summer. So you can see that our black males were down 2.5% for the first time in a long time. Again, very small group of students who took classes, but it did affect them. I did look at the summer story. I just kind of just went through that. Again, bachelor's programs, face-to-face, all good. Black students in the most need still, this time including our black males, and a great banner summer for Hispanic students. Last slide just goes over all of what I just said, so I'm not going to repeat myself. Are there any questions or anything that I can share with you?
Chair Kidwell, I have one comment. I think it's going to be hard, over the next 12 months at least, to try to figure out what all this means. I mean, I'm struggling as we reviewed this. You know, we're up, we're down. One semester, the success rates are better. Then, you know, two of them, they're worse. And obviously, I think this is a product of pandemic, of new learning environments. What is the conversation about how we're going to start weighing all this new information that we're dealing with? Because what we're looking at now is going to be completely different from what we looked at three years ago. And it's a lot, I know, for the students, and it's equally as much for you all to try to analyze and assess, why is this happening? Where can we make improvements so that we can kind of steady things again?
So I'll start the question. I'm sure other people might want to jump in. But I think, you know, seven years ago, under the prior president, the college tended to do things for all students. You know, we would bring something forward, and we would immediately want to do it for all students. And what we've learned is that we're really good about doing things for smaller groups of students. And each of the students during the pandemic have different needs. And that doesn't mean whether it's race and ethnicity or gender or whatever. Different students have very specific needs. So we have programs like our African-American Male Program. We're starting an African-American Female Program specific to them. We're starting a Latinx Program this fall for the same reasons, as well as a first-generation program or initiative around those student bodies. We tend to have better success when we're looking at that specific group in catering to what they actually need, and then they have better one-on-one responses from us. I'm sure Dr. Williams probably has more. I'm seeing you touch your thing right now. If you had more you wanted to say.
I didn't, and I think that's a great question because basically, you're asking, what is the new normal?
Right. We don't know what the baseline is.
How do we build our new baseline? And in a conversation yesterday, when we were having the run-through, we talked about, guys, this may be the new normal. This may be the new baseline. And so when we focused on equity and providing each person what they need to be successful, and we started looking at how do we bring on infinity groups? How do we help people feel that they belong? I think that's going to, this year, is going to be the development of the new normal. I don't think we're going to be able to compare enrollment as apples to apples to two years, three years ago, because it is totally different. The landscape of competition is different. It used to be SPC was 50% online pre-COVID. Now everybody's doing online. And so the enrollment's changing, the dynamics are moving, and the needs of our students are different, as well as the needs of our employees. How we work, learn, and play is different. And so right now, I've heard leaders say, we're building the plane while we fly it. But in all honesty, we're building the new normal. I do not think we'll ever go back to the way it was and that when we did our strategic plan, we chose innovating our future because we've got to create what the new landscape will be. So the data that we're getting this year, Trustee Stone Cypher, is the data that I've shared with the team. This needs to start building the new baseline because it's not going to be the same. So you're right on point.
And I just want to make sure too, and I know we're already thinking through it this way, but just as a reminder, as we innovate and come up with creative ways to figure out what the new baseline is, and then how do we improve from there, let's just make sure we don't lower the expectations of the institution either. Let's keep the standards high for the students, through exhaustion or not, and get creative and figure out how we can still help them be successful, which will allow them to be successful in the real world once they leave this college in the future.
I would have to just say that our faculty have been amazing. I mean, if you look at that spring success, that's really them working every day and then teaching a class, I know what it takes. You just, you have to reach out to the students every single day individually. How are you doing? What do you need? What's going on? And they're doing it in spades. And so it is a new normal, and it is a much more high-touch environment that we're in right now in order to keep our students here. And it's a testament to the people who are working on it at this college to keep everybody going, so.
Sure. I agree with Trustee Stone Cypher. And I just also wanted to acknowledge both from your planning and your group, Dr. Crawford, together with Ms. Hunt. When we looked at the budget last year, and we talked about many of the community colleges around the state were budgeting for increases in students because generally in recessions or in other types of economic turmoil around the country, people enroll in school because they don't have something else to do. And this was such a unique societal issue that the college did an amazing job of recognizing the difference of the pandemic versus these other economic recessions and truly implementing these programs. I mean, the Student Services, I know two months ago, we saw that presentation and got that update. But the online services that, in my opinion, I know Trustee Gibbons bangs this drum every month about Student Services, but the pivot that has occurred, I was so impressed to see all those touches and see that report. And truly, that led into seeing the success rates here. So kudos to you all. I know we have a lot of work to do, but I think the fact that you all, for the first time in many years, not for the first time, you've been doing it for four years, but the collective discussions among the administrators in the different departments of how all of this works together instead of independently around the departments, I think the fruits of those labors are truly, so we're seeing those. And to Trustee Stone Cypher's point, I know pushing through through the exhaustion is tough, but I feel like if we're succeeding now and making strides now, just think of what we're going to be able to do when the new normal is set, so.
And I think you're setting up the college for being recognized for keeping it going as strongly as it is without lowering that bar. I think that that's the key. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, Dr. Davanna Pierre.
Good morning.
Presenting, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Chair Kidwell, Vice Chair Butts, and thank you for your service, former Chair Cole. Trustees, President Williams, thanks for having me today. I am Davanna Pierre. I'm the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Director for the college. I'm fairly new to the college. I just finished my first year. And being the first in this position and being hired during COVID has definitely presented some challenges. But we're moving. We're working. And as Sabrina has, Dr. Crawford has talked about before, and Dr. Williams, we kept moving. We kept going. We kept doing the things that we needed to do on behalf of St. Petersburg College. So I'm excited about that. I spent majority of this past year in discovery and meeting with our faculty, administrators, staff, and our students to talk about what it is that we need on behalf of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And I want to share some of that with you today. So I want to talk briefly about what we do in our office. And it can basically be broken down into three different categories. Compliance, which is regulations Title IX, Title VII, ADA, EAO, as well as advocacy, what we do on behalf of those marginalized populations amongst our faculty, our staff, our students, and our community. And then education, professional development and things we do for training. So I wanted to make sure that we have some common knowledge and common language when we talk about Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion, and what those things mean. And so equity, we define equity as promoting justice and partiality and fairness within the procedures, processes, and distribution of resources by institutions or systems. And diversity is basically our multiple identities, those things that we bring to the table, right? Inclusion, an outcome to ensure that thoughts, ideas, and perspectives of individuals matter and are welcome. And Dr. Williams, President Williams, talked a little bit earlier about that sense of belonging. At the intersection of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion is that sense of belonging. And when we talk about belonging, belonging is an organization that engages the full potential of the individual, where innovation thrives and views and beliefs are valued and integrated. And that's where we want to be. That's the St. Petersburg College that we want to be. So I want to briefly just highlight our vision, which is to create and nurture a culture of inclusion, and again, that sense of belonging in all aspects of the college. Our mission, which is to champion institutional excellence through Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And our values, integrity, collaboration, equity, transparency. And so in looking at our goals, our goals can be identified in three different categories. Mutual respect, inclusiveness, and again, that sense of belonging. We want to make sure that our students, as well as our employees and our community members have that sense of belonging. So when we look at mutual respect, what we're trying to do is infuse a greater sense of cultural competence or cultural humility through our students. And we're going to do this in three ways. Create a curriculum to advance cultural competence, where all feel respected. Present culturally sensitive faculty and staff experts in the classroom. And produce workforce-ready students who are prepared to, for a diverse working and learning environment. As it relates to inclusiveness, we want to make sure we cultivate inclusiveness by improving the recruitment, hiring, retention, and promotion of skilled, highly-engaged, and culturally competent employees. We want to do this in two ways, by building an equity-based workforce and streamlined training for employees to strengthen hiring and our onboarding processes. And I, the chief HR, our new chief HR officer and I have been working well together since his arrival to ensure that we do this. And finally, that sense of belonging, right? And I keep honing on this. But we want to enhance students' and employees' sense of belonging by developing an equity-minded culture. We want to do this in two ways. Creating a platform and spaces that allow conversation on issues that impact our community and create a learning and working environment where individuals feel respected, supported, and valued. We had the opportunity this spring to participate in a SESI survey. And SESI, we found that, it's a new pilot survey with SESI, their diversity survey, and we found that 83, excuse me, 88% of our students feel that they're in a culture of caring at St. Petersburg College. Of course, we have a little bit of work to do, a lot of work actually, 12%. But when we took a look at students that felt like they belonged, 83% of our students felt like they belonged at the college. We, in looking at the survey and in looking at some of the things that the students had to say, we felt very confident in our results. But we know we need to do the same thing for our employees as well. And so I'm really excited about collaborating with our chief HR officer to do this for our employees in order for us to move forward. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about next steps. The HARRY, the Higher Education Research Institute Staff Climate Survey, we look forward to gathering more information from our employees about their experience and how they feel as far as St. Petersburg College is concerned and their sense of belonging. So we look forward to doing that this fall. And we look forward in our next steps to completing the diversity dashboard that we've created to ensure that it has real-time data, that we can have up-to-date information so that we can make decisions based upon the data that we have. Revising the onboard, excuse me, onboarding process and reviewing, revising, and creating college, in some cases, creating college procedures with Mr. Wright-Green and our HR team. Creating an EDI Advisory Committee. We're invested to ensure that, in this sense of belonging, we want to make sure that we have everyone at the college that's a stakeholder. That means our faculty, our staff, our students, to be a part of this advisory committee to move Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion forward for the college. And finally, we look forward to launching our EDI website and making sure that St. Petersburg College's websites are in compliance, and we are doing everything that we need to do to move forward. I will say that this past year, this past summer, sorry about that. This past summer, we had tremendous success with faculty members and the Summer Institute. We focused on cultural competence, and we look forward to building on that this academic year. We spent about four Fridays working with faculty on cultural competence and how to infuse cultural competence in their classroom. And so we're really excited to take that work forward and to move that forward. We have a number of different initiatives that we have planning, that we have planned for this academic year. But let me highlight that this is a new position that we've never had before. And this is not one person's job. I have a team of dedicated professionals behind me, literally in some cases. Susan DeMers is back there, Dara Wright-Green, that is committed to moving St. Petersburg College forward as it relates to Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And I'm excited about our possibilities for this. That concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
I have a question. In my two years on the board, and I'm relatively new, this seems to be an issue, we've been pushing this forward in my two years. Every meeting, this comes up, and it's been great. I would like to ask the trustees that maybe have been here longer how it compares to before I was around because I know Trustee Gibbons has been around for a while. And is it getting better? And I mean, in just my two years, I feel like it's been a focal point. And the culmination is you and your group that are pushing this forward even further. So, you know, it seems to me like it's something we're focused on.
I would say it is something we're focused on. We have a lot of work to do in this area. One of the challenges that we've had is we don't have the policies that we need to have. And we did have to have a year of discovery. We did need to figure out what was not working to build what is working. When Dr. Pierre talked about the diversity dashboard, it's not just boys and girls and ages. It's how many people are we hiring from diverse companies? How many companies are we bringing on? It's how many minorities are promoted? How are we treating our LGBTQ? What's happening with our women versus men? And it's, we have a lot of data on students where we can bring, that we do not have that on the employees. We do not have all of that on our contracts and things that we're doing. So the data is in there. So the dashboard that's being built is to capture that. And that, and that's something that I believe Trustee Gibbons would agree with, that he's questioned the foundation on, he's questioned Jeanette Hunt and team, on, we have these new contracts coming forward to the college, how many of our minority groups are led by women? And that's the data that we've not captured well, that when Dr. Pierre says we're coming back with a real plan, now that we have our HR leader, all the grounds are covered, she now has a team to work with her instead of one person, we're doing the advisory group, and we're bringing back a real plan with metrics and data. But last year was a huge eye-opening, fact-finding, trying to collect the team, trying to develop the things and find the issues. When we come back, hopefully before December, we'll be able to bring you, here's the strategic plan that rolls into the college's plan. And so that's where, where we are.
So the work continues. Go ahead.
Ms. Pierre, she, she, she took off the hook on some of this, because I had a bunch of questions.
Really?
Yeah, so she, she, she answered some of them. To answer the chair's question a little bit more directly, I would applaud the president for taking the position of having an equity officer. Let me just say that. We've never had that. So that's a step in the right direction. Most organizations, I don't care how good they are or who they are, deal with, or not deal with, sometimes institutional, structural racism, right? They don't even know it exists. They've been doing things for so long that they don't even realize that their processes have outlived their usefulness, the way they do things. Our own hiring practices at just about any company, if you look at it, you've been doing it that way for so long, unless there's somebody new that is coming in from the outside that brings those practices in. Usually, we hire what's comfortable. That's part of institutional and structural racism, right? Not that people are, the intent is to be racist or hurt people, it is to be comfortable. Like, you know, for example, in, in our own company, we have gone outside of the box. We are a majority-minority company. What does that mean? People can say that they're a majority-minority company, but do you really know the data? At AMSCOT, we're more women and minorities in leadership positions, and across the board, more women and minorities work in our branches than anything else. So we want that diversity, we seek it. We want people that are from that particular neighborhood to be working in our branches, right? Not that we do it any better, because there's some stuff at the top that we need to do a lot better, and we're working on that too.
Sure.
But I'm giving you an example. So I would applaud the administration, the president, and her staff for that. The challenging part is, how do you take the data, right? And is the data that they're getting, you know, she talked about a survey, is that the right questions that need to be asked? Are students really answering the questions, or are they just taking a survey, right? And that's, that's the difficult part, for her to be able to, or anybody, any of us, to be able to take that information and utilize it properly, because we don't, you know, I was in the car with my son the other day, I don't even know the songs these kids listen to, let alone know what they're link. He texts me in the car, I'm like, "Bro, I'm right here." You know, so they, they communicate differently. They, they, they do so, he, his world is social media. He's not a social media person, but I mean, they, bullying is social media now. You know, when I was a kid, you get into a fight, and Dr. Williams would tell you, "I was in a lot of them," right? So, but, but you fought the bully, and you moved on, right? Now, you can't fight cyberspace, because so many people know. And so I say all that, to say that it's, it's a very different world, they should be applauded. I think that we are definitely headed in the right direction, looking at how the world has started to kind of peel back the onion a little bit, and start to look at race, equity, disparities, and a whole lot of other things across America. I think we have done a very good job. Pinellas County has done, I would say as a county, a very decent, at best, job of dealing with tracking numbers related to minorities and minority businesses. I think with Dr. Williams and this, and just listening from this presentation, Mr. Chair, it sounds like we're going to be tracking a lot more things that we will able, be able to go to, you know, our dashboard. And truly, if you want to be honest, I mean, I hate to say it, it's political time, and I'm not trying to be political, but I, the best dashboard that I saw in modern, in my, in my lifetime in modern times thus far, was Mayor Baker had a dashboard on just about everything in the city of St. Pete that the citizens could look at. I think we're modeling that, and I'm using that as an example, because I remember it was taken like, and Katie probably can answer this, I'd speak to this better than I can on this particular piece, but I remember when he took office, it was like, for permitting, it was like a, a four-week or five-week wait just to get a meeting, and it went down to like a day, right? Because guess why? The public could see it. People could see that, you know, it's taken four or five weeks. So I think we're headed in the right direction. The change of the culture within, and I talked to Dr. Williams a little bit about this yesterday, changing the culture of an organization and making it permeate all the way to the bottom in an organization this size, it's a lot of work. It's going to be very tough. That's not a one-year, two-year, three-year job. That's a, that's a ten-year process of hiring the right people and figuring out what are the values of the organization that you're looking to change, right?
And this is a first step.
This is a very good first step. And I'm saying that to answer your question. I think in the time that I've been here, this has never been a focus. Doesn't mean that the other presidents weren't good people. Tom Furlong was a great person, Bill was a good person, Dr. Cutler, they all have different focuses. And I think as a minority, I think that also with Dr. Williams being a minority, that the focus in our lifetime has been a little bit different. We've seen some things differently because of our perspective. Your perspective is very different, and Nathan's is very different, but it should be respected, right? And that's what we're looking to do as an organization. I think, just from listening to you, I don't know if that's the case. I'm just talking out of school, because I haven't been to your meetings. But I will tell you this, that, that, that I think that we are headed in the right direction, and I've never seen this. So our administration should definitely be applauded, because I think it's an attack on structural and institutional racism that exists. And as again, I say that, not racism from the standpoint where we're trying to be, we are openly and outwardly trying to hurt people. It is biases that have grown into the organization over many, many, many years, and the only way you can change that is through many, many, many years of reversing it.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Trustee Gibbons. I just wanted, before I take my seat, I wanted to say, we're definitely looking at those policies and procedures and making sure that they're equitable. And, and that's definitely something that, that the chief HR officer and I, and looking at our hiring procedures and restructuring some of those things.
He's from Dallas, he won't get it right.
No, he is not from Dallas, he's from Detroit.
He definitely won't get it right. No, I was going to say, just be careful. And this is a, this is a really, really important job, Dr. Williams. I would say just be careful, don't go too far to the left, to the right. You want to be in the middle of the road. You want to be fair to everybody when you fix things. Don't, you know, my uncle, who you know I adore, Doug Jamison, he used to tell me all the time that the laws in Florida are screwed up because they're, and they are the middle ground between two extreme sides, right? And so we want to find that right, you know, if it's sixty percent, if it's forty percent, you want to find that and try to, try to get it right. So just be careful and take your time. I don't think, I don't hear anybody on the board saying, "We're rushing this." We want to get it right. We want to go down in history as the board that got it right, as opposed to pushing it through, so.
One of the things that I do want to say, and thank you all, and great job, the thing that, when, when you talk about equity, diversity, and inclusion, you can't leave out practices. We have a lot of practices, things that we have just, that's how it's always been done. And so we're definitely looking at policies and procedures and structure, but practices, I think those are the things that are harder to change. You know, the, the DNA goes deep, right? It's, it's, it's there. And so we're going to have to start really having some great conversations, those courageous discussions about, is that required, or is that a practice? Is that how we've done it? And so that's where the advisory committee, and for me, this is extremely important. And it, and it's not because I'm a minority, it's because it's right. And I believe that every voice should be heard, and everyone should be considered. So when you hear me talk about LGBTQ, and you hear me talk about veterans, and you hear me talk about women in male-dominated roles, and males and women-dominated roles, it's the whole kit and caboodle. So we have to keep that in mind. But I'm, I'm really looking forward to this work. Davana kind of drives me crazy, because she sees all of this, and teaching us the right conversations and the things to say that have been said in public that shouldn't be, and helping us be more sensitive and things of that nature. So she, she does a good job in being our conscious and telling us, "Well, you probably shouldn't do that." And these are things we've done for a long time that we have to stop doing. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Good job.
Real quick, I, this is one of those times where I was talking about where Trustee Cole, Chair Cole was very cool and collected. And Dr. Williams, I, I, they were both very cool. When we went to the foundation, I challenged them. And I don't think they liked the way I challenged them. Confrontation always, not always a bad thing, but it brings light to some of the things that are issues. And they sat back and let me challenge that board in a way I think they've never been challenged before. And I think, I think Jesse would even say, "Now, we've made and turned the corner, and as well as these two ladies, we turned the corner on some of those things." So don't be afraid to ask the tough questions and be even confrontational at times when you have to be, right? And so, so when we talked about her grace and, and how she handles things, as well as Dr. Williams, they were, they were, they knew. I told them going into it, I said, "I'm not going to be nice." But they let me do it my way, and they came back, and they were able to get a smoother approach and a smoother landing to what we actually needed to get accomplished. And I think the foundation, and Chair Cole, you can correct me if I wrong, is in a better place because of how we handled that situation, and you all were able to talk to them. I left, I, I was, you know, I wasn't mad, they thought I was mad, but I wasn't mad. I knew exactly what I was doing. And, but, but that's one of the situations. So don't be afraid to be confrontational. Sometimes you have to be confrontational, right? To get the best out of everybody. So again, I would applaud you guys, but I just wanted to bring that as a point, because I think that was one of the points that I was talking about with the foundation. I think Chair Cole and Dr. Williams had done an excellent job related to that, to that particular issue, and, and we challenged them. And I think they challenged them as well afterwards, they just did it a little differently, right? So I made them wake up, and then they, you know, they're much better, both of them are much better-looking than I am, so they were able to kind of slide in and, you know, do their thing.
Chair Kidwell, thank you so much. I just wanted to comment, about three years ago, I guess, we were, I don't, at an ACCT conference, and Dr. Williams and I were sitting there, and as a white woman, and I'll look at the white men sitting up here, you know, sometimes this conversation is not the most comfortable conversation. I'll exclude you from this part of it. And I looked at Dr. Williams, and because she's always, she and I have had some very candid conversations over the past four years on this topic specifically, and, you know, and I, and I know this is probably where you were going with the question, so I'll, I'll put your mind at ease, because one of the things that I said to Dr. Williams, as we were leaving this luncheon at ACCT, and I said to, said to her, I said, "Look around. It is amazing to me how diverse this room is." There were a thousand people at this luncheon, and I was the minority probably sitting in the room, and I said, "This is what's wonderful about the community college experience and the community college opportunities that are here, because this isn't looking at our student body, but certainly this room is, could be reflective of our student body, and the fact that there are so many leaders that are diverse that are in that community." And one thing that I did say to Dr. Williams at the time was, "I don't feel as though I can be a spokesperson for this issue because of my background and my upbringing and the way I look." And Dr. Williams looked at me very candidly, and she said, "Everyone has a right to speak on this issue."
That's right.
And you just need to choose to do it, and you have every right as everyone else."
Absolutely.
And over the past four years, she has been a wonderful coach for me, and that's why I think you and I had a little bit of this conversation as well, Dr. Pierre, because it truly is, I, I have pulled this out of my book and have made notes, because I think each of us have our own role, and we have two and a lot of other wonderful mentors on this topic who can help us in any way. So thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, one last thing, if we could. Madam President, is there a way that we can have a further discussion at one of the workshops with Ms. you and Ms. Davana about, it just crossed my mind, maybe we need to have a series across the county on race, and let people come in and talk to the president and the board about things that we can do to better help with race relations throughout the county.
Perhaps ISPS can help.
Yeah, we're the county's college.
I think ISPS would be good.
No, I think it would be great to do that. I mean, yeah, fine with doing that, but I think sometimes we get caught up, and we're right just on the Seminole campus with ISPS. I think we, the problem with some of this is that we don't, we are not in communities that can speak up and get to places to speak up. And so maybe we should consider doing it differently. That's why I said, maybe can we talk about it at a workshop, so that everybody has an opportunity to talk about it, and, and what's the best way of getting information.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Darrell Wright Green.
Good morning, good morning. Good morning. Newly-elected Chair Kidwell. Vice Chair Bux. Trustees, congratulations on the time that you served, Trustee Cole, and I appreciate everything. And Dr. Williams, thank you. I'm very appreciative to be here. I am Darrell Wright Green, I'm the new Chief Human Resource and Talent Officer. I've been hearing my name a lot, so the expectations is up here, and my shoulders just kept doing this and this, as, you know, everyone just kept saying, "Hey, our newly-elected, I mean, our new Chief Human Resource Officer here." I'm just, I'm ecstatic to be here. Today, I'm before you to present our ancillary benefit plan. This was something that was on our actual docket to present to you all. My team did a wonderful job prior to me coming in. So I'm just ecstatic to relay the information that they actually have laid out for you. Before we get to that, the first thing I want to do is I want to give big kudos and thank you to our healthcare benefit advisory committee. This was led by Kimberly R. Williams, that's the chair, as well as we had a slew of everybody else in the college, which is creating that sense of belonging that Dr. Pierre was talking about, right? Everyone had a voice, everyone was able to speak about the benefits that they think we should have, that they wanted, that they desired, that they hungered for. So I want to thank this committee for all their hard work. I also want to thank Brown and Brown as our broker of record. It's very important to have someone that's standing that gap for you as you are going out, and you are trying to get new benefits, and have those relationships and those rapport with different vendors. That's a huge win for us, my Human Resource Department, for being able to get all this stuff done without me being in play. So I mean, I'm just amazed by that. And then Florida Consortium, you know, we actually just went over to them with our actual healthcare benefits, so we wanted to make sure that they were included in this process as well. Now, I'm a person who like to see the data and see what I'm working with prior to me knowing what, where the recommendation is. So you see a lot of words here and graphs there. What I wanted to kind of highlight in this here is basically, the dental plan was paid a hundred percent by SPC, right, at the lower-level plan. However, our vision STD and our long-term disability, employees were responsible for that at a hundred percent. If you go through the graphs here at the bottom, what you'll see is how our actual employees participated in each of these benefits.
That, can you go back? That plan is what we have today.
Yes, this is our plan.
That was what was negotiated two years ago, or what happened?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. This is a continuation of the previous page in regards to our EAP This is a continuation of the previous page in regards to our EAP plan and our group life. SPC again pays 100% of that cost. With the voluntary life insurance, employees are responsible for 100% of that cost, right? So you can see again how our employees participate across each of these benefits. Now, the bid process, it's very important for you guys to understand that this bid process was fair and it was equitable, and what kind of took place in that. So Brown and Brown, as our broker of record, provided our committee with a comprehensive overview of all the current coverage and actually solicited their feedback about, you know, what did they want? What were the needs that they were actually seeking in regards to this? So what they did was they actually assessed the net worths, the costs of the actual benefits plan, to kind of give them a full analysis of that. And then they kind of looked at things such as the self-insured versus the fully insured plans. Now, if you guys are not familiar with the self-insured versus the fully insured, self-insured puts us at more of a risk, right? If our claims are going up, guess what? That's more money that's coming out of SPC pocket. Versus a fully insured plan means that we're going to pay the same regardless of what, right? So they kind of took a look at that. And then the feedback that kind of came out as a loud resounding, "We want this," was that people wanted to receive contacts and lenses all in the same year. I don't wear either or, but my wife do, and I hear it all the time. Why do I have to get either contacts or glasses? So I think this was a win for us to kind of bring this up. I also want to help you guys to know that as our actual broker of records, SPC, they manage the RFP plan, but they don't get a commission off that. What they do is they stand in the gap for us. So they go and they try to see which is the best vendor for us, because again, they want us to renew those contracts and things of that nature, right? So what they did was they actually, they got us numerous proposals from various vendors. I think that it was about five to 10 on each of the different coverages. It ranged from five to 10, depending on who wanted to actually give a proposal, who didn't. Some people actually didn't get their proposal in on time, things of that nature. All the quotes were reviewed by our actual committee, and then the committee narrowed down the plan choices and the vendor selections for final negotiation. I do want you to know that Florida Consortium also presented quotes to us as we went through that. Now, the recommendation with the approval of Dr. Williams was this, this is what they wanted to roll out, which I think are magnificent recommendations. The basic life plan, they want to move from Hartford to MetLife. The basic life plan will create an $82,000 cost savings for SPC, which is, I think is phenomenal, right? Yes, sir.
Explain the, is the basic life, a life insurance plan?
Yes.
Okay.
They'll get the same coverage that they have now, and this is a three-year rate guarantee.
That's good.
Then we have the voluntary life. So the employee plan pays the same premium coverage, which doesn't change their cost. However, the employee can purchase up to 100% of that same coverage for their spouse. Now, with a lot of these plans, you are only able to go up to 50%, but they're taking it up to 100%, which is a great, great benefit for us. There's no reduction at the age of 70, which is also something that's very big, because if you got a $500,000 policy, you turn 70 years old, it goes down to $250,000, right? So that's also good. It's also a three-year rate guarantee. Our short-term disability, our actual premium reduced for our employees, which saves them a total of $18,000 per year as a whole, right? So we want to save our employees money. That's always a great thing to do, especially with our culture and everything like that. Same coverage, three-year rate guarantee. The long-term disability, the premium reduced for the employees, again, save them about $13,000 for the year. They have that same coverage, three-year rate guarantee with that as well. Here, we're going to move, we're recommending to move from Aetna to MetLife, right? What, the thing was with the actual Aetna plan was that it was self-insured. It was not fully insured. So we were able to move to a fully insured plan and create a cost savings of about $71,000. The coverage was enhanced, and it also included coverage for dental implants, and this is also a three-year rate guarantee. The coverage with our iMed for our Vision Insurance, that stayed the same. iMed is a phenomenal company, we were happy with that. However, they offered us a third richer plan, which was the actual contacts and the lenses. Also, two plans include LASIK discounts, and the rate guarantee is for four years. Then we're going to continue on with Dear Oaks for our Employee Assistance Program. So basically, this plan, I don't know if you guys have been keeping up with everything, but EAP has been highly utilized by employees. With the pandemic and things that have been going on, people have found solace in going to their work, and now they have to do everything from home, right? So basically, this plan was a phenomenal plan, and it kept, helped us out throughout the pandemic. This screen here, again, is a lot of numbers and a lot of things. I just want to kind of bring your attention to the employer annual premium of that $790, $895, this is the current amount that we're paying, and our employees' annual premium, which is the $860,359. So this is our current plan, and this is what we're paying as of today. With the recommended plan, we're going to save almost $111,000, because our premium is going to go down to $678,943, and we'll save our employees about $50,000, because they're going to go down to $810,483.
We're going to go down in the cost, but the actual coverages are higher.
Higher and better.
Better. I just want to make sure I understood that.
So again, with the consortium plans, I did want to kind of highlight this. The reason we did not go with the consortium plans were that the plans that we got through our actual broker of record were more superior, and they were not competitive. With the dental plan, basically, they're going through the same process that we're going through right now. So they're actually going out doing the RFPs, so they don't have anything in place to offer us.
The consortium.
The consortium, yes, ma'am. Vision, the same thing, and then Employee Assistance Program. Our next steps is upon your approval of this recommendation today, we will get out of communication to our employees. At the end of August, we'll begin the actual implementation. The benefit guides will be available to our employees by September 27. My actual team will hold the ancillary benefits question and answer sessions from between October 11th and the 29th. We will also make sure we have the individual sessions for our Spanish-speaking employees and our Vietnamese-speaking employees. And then open enrollment will begin November 1st through the 14th, which is usually the normal timeframe for our open enrollment period. Last year, you guys may recall that we talked about the Aetna Medicare Advantage Plan for our retirees. So we decided to extend that plan out a year, so that our retirees will be able to do everything they need to do, choose the doctors they needed to see, prior to moving them over to our Florida Blue Medicare Plan. That plan is ending on December 31st, 2021. So we have about 18 people who are impacted, 18 retirees who are impacted by this, and they're paying between $221,94 to $233,99 a month for their actual premium. With our new plan, we want to educate them about this, and we want to offer them the new plan, which is $271,39. Now, benefits did increase for a lot of people as we're going through this, so this is not a big change. However, that's going to, it's going to end based on us no longer being with Aetna. So because we're no longer with them, we can't offer them the actual rates that we offer our employees with Aetna, because we no longer have their actual, their service. And that concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Trustee Givens.
We used our broker, Brown and Brown, to bring us back ancillary insurances, insurance situations, right?
Correct.
Brown and Brown was already paid a fee by us to be our broker, right?
Correct.
Okay, so they've been paid. Then you said, they don't receive any fees.
No commissions.
Commissions for this, at all.
No.
So not from the other side?
No.
I'd like to see that in writing from Brown and Brown, that every employee they sign up with whoever the insurance group, they don't make money. That's an impossibility. They can't make money without doing that. So when they sign you up or me up, on the other side, they get a credit with the insurance group, based, that's how they get paid, based upon the amount of people they sign up. So they are making some fee.
Well, I, and I do have Jessica here with Brown and Brown.
Okay. They have to be making money off that, I'm just telling you. I'm not, you haven't been here long enough.
Do you want Jessica to answer your question?
I don't need to answer the question, it's okay. I don't want to answer to the question. What I'd like to do is, because I'm the person that I think brought this ancillary insurance stuff up in the very beginning.
Right. You, when you spoke with me, you wanted to make sure that the employees had a larger choice to choose from, which is what Brown and Brown did. They went out and got like 10 or 20 policies of every area and brought it back to the committee for them to look at and decide through.
So, so Madam President, and this is no disrespect to anybody, competition only drives prices down. Not bringing back a group of things that you know you're, these people know that they're going to be locked in and making money. If you bring back a wide group of people that can provide ancillary services, that drives prices down. That's how you drive prices down.
Well, that's, that's.
Hold on, let me finish.
Okay.
That's why you got CVS and Walgreens. That's why you have Walmart and Target. That's why, that's how you drive, that's why people choose Katie or another lawyer, right? Because they, you can look at, this to me is not the best option. And I would ask the board to table this or vote it down, I'm just telling you. Because this is going to our broker, making sure that the broker can pick and bring back to a committee of people, right, who don't really under, most of them will not understand insurance. I looked at the list, there's a few that may understand insurance product, but I'm just telling you, this is not, this is not competition. This is not opening it up to everybody and allowing them to compete. I would like for our employees to be able to go and say, "I like this over this." Get all of them and put them in there. Why are we picking certain ancillary insurance groups over another one? If that's, if it's ancillary, let the employee pick what they want. And guess what? When competition happens, guess what? If Aetna's on the board, or MetLife's on the board, or Hartford's on the board, and they don't get anybody that year, guess what they're going to do the next year? Drive the price down. Because that's what Nate has to do, if he ain't selling beer.
Well.
So personally, I think this is, Dr. Williams, I mean, I like to tell you we're doing great, but I think this is not good at all. I'm just telling you, I don't, I don't see the ingenuity or creativity in going to Brown and Brown, having them bring us back the same thing. This is the same thing we did before, we locked ourselves in with certain groups, and that's who we got, that's who the employees could go with, as opposed to just opening it up, so.
Chair Kidwell, can I say one thing?
Sure.
Devin and I agree with your points. However, it's been my understanding and my experience that unless the insurance groups know that they have a pool of people that they may have access to, they're not going to spend the time on offering rates. If they know that they have seven other groups, and maybe they only get five SPC employees to join in with them, they're not going to spend the time on this. They're just not going to present, they're not going to offer a plan. The only way you know that is the RFP is the competitive process, and then they know that they're the group that's locked in for this large amount of employees, essentially. That's, that's how it's worked with.
My experience with larger organizations is that if you put it out there and you let employees make decisions, the other folks that are not getting, you say five people in the group, they will leave the group, and you will get a competitive price, and they're going to where they're going to have the best bang for their dollar. Employees, believe it or not, will talk to each other and say, "Well, I have this plan over this plan, this works better for me, my person gets back to me." And, you know, this, so there are a lot of variables. I don't think we've explored any of them. All we've done is just gone back to our broker and said, "Bring us back this."
So Trustee Givens has a, there's, I believe there's a couple of great points in there. It is true that you have to take the insurance companies your pool of people, it's spreading the risk. So unfortunately, insurance companies aren't going to participate if they know that they're not able to pull it to be able to spread the risk, there's not enough people. One of the valid points is, on the, on the broker side, a broker can waive their commission from an insurance company and charge the organization a fee. So if that's the case, Brown and Brown can waive their commission from MetLife, Aetna, whoever they're using, to lower the college's rates, but yet they're getting paid a flat fee from the college. So, so if that's our, that's the arrangement that we have.
They're getting a flat fee from MetLife, too.
In, in most of the cases, that is, you know, a great way to do it, especially if you have a large population. So, so that's fine. Now, one thing with that is, you know, if you want to make sure you're getting the best rates from various places, is to have several brokers go to market to these companies to try to do that. So with that, there are some drawbacks with that as well, so there's, you know, insurance is tough, it's not a, you know, an easy solution for everybody, right? But, you know, I can tell you just based on experience, that Brown and Brown's a quality organization, they're a broker that competes with, with my, with my company. But, you know, again, it sounds like, you know, you guys did a lot of work to try to find out some of the best companies. These rates, you know, just on a whole seem, you know, in line with, with some of the things that I have seen. But, you know, again, I think that there are a couple of points, you know, there in terms of making sure you want to get that best bang for the buck, is to possibly take it to additional brokerages in the future.
In light of the timing and the fact that open enrollment is in November, and we did it two years ago and gave specific direction, I think that we wanted this to be the process this time. I know frustrating for you, because you've asked in the past to have an open market for our employees, but I, in my opinion, an open market for employees is not going to drive the costs based on the pool of employees, because the companies will not be responsive to have a plan if they can't guarantee some level of participation in the plan. And that's what we tried previously, and it didn't work, I think, right? Didn't we actually do that before, or we?
What we learned during this process, because we remembered Trustee Givens' request, we did cast the net wide, and many of the companies wanted a guarantee for so many plans, like so many participants. And if you can't provide the participants a guarantee, the prices went up, which was not working well for the group, for the committee, which is full of faculty, staff, administrators, et cetera. So what we had not done in the past, we did keep it closed. This time, we opened it, and with, through Brown and Brown.
Yes, ma'am.
And what came back was, can you guarantee? Can you guarantee? And we could not guarantee. And so without the guarantee, this is the price. And so the committee's like, well, that's higher than what we're paying now. And so they were still looking for the best prices with the larger number. You saw the number of SPC employees who are participating, it's a large number of participants, but we could not guarantee if you had five iCare plans, that they would all get an equal share. And that was the challenge that we had this time. So Trustee Givens respectfully is, is right, but we also tried it. And so I don't want him to think we just arbitrarily did exactly the same thing that we did before. We did take his request in consideration, and the committee thought, "Look, these are better plans, and they're cheaper, and we get to do more. And they're, they're going to keep their prices lower than the big group that we could not commit to. We couldn't guarantee that they would actually get a set number of policies." So that, that's what we did.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
This is not an attack on Brown and Brown, because we use Brown and Brown, a lot of people use Brown and Brown. I respectfully will disagree, and I'm going to vote no. I probably will get outvoted, as you very well heard on this, will disagree, because I don't think that my request was heard properly. I think what Mr. Butts described is more along the lines of what I was discussing. Let's get several Brown and Browns, right, and get them to come back. What we did is we did the easy thing and went to our broker, the one that we paid already. And so. and said, bring us back all this. They cast a net. But remember, everybody has different relationships. Jason has different relationships than I do. You have different relationships than somebody else does. And so we don't know what we could have gotten because we only use one broker, right? And if we had cast a large net, like I was trying to say before, and said, look, let's go outside the box, not use just Brown and Brown, let's go to whoever. And Hyatt Brown is a great guy. I've known him for years. He lives over in Daytona Beach. Great man. He, I'm on another board of trustees. They do the insurance for Bethune-Cookman as well. Not that Brown and Brown couldn't do it. The difference is, we need to be looking at being competitive for our employees and making sure that we really do cast a large net. So when we come back, we can truly say that we did something very different. It's almost like the, it's almost like the conversation that we just had with Dr. Pierre. We did the same thing that we normally do, and the thing that we would always do is go back to our broker as opposed to doing something very different and outside of the box and saying, we're going to deal with more than just one broker. So I respectfully will disagree, and that's okay. I'm okay with that. I'm not, you know, you guys have to move forward or whatever you think is appropriate.
What is the timeline?
I, sorry, go ahead. I hear you, Mr. Givens, and I understand, and I hope this is noted in the future so that we can have the conversation and have more time, I guess, to really decide how that process looks.
Yep.
I'm going to move to approve the ancillary benefit plan that was just presented to us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, board. Appreciate you.
Moving on to the consent agenda. If the trustee would like to make a motion to take up the entire consent agenda, please do so.
Some of.
Second. Motion and second, take up all the items on the consent agenda, section B. Do I have, or I guess?
You have to open.
Yeah, what's that?
We have one rules manual discussion, so you have to open the public hearing one more time to vote on that.
All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Where are we on that?
So we have to open the meeting for public hearing one more time to Suzanne.
Does the rule change?
For the rule change. So you have to hit the ballot, open the meeting for public hearing.
Ah, there it is. There it is. This is for the proposed changes to the board trustees' rules manual. The public rules hearing portion of the meeting is now open to consider a duly advertised change to the board of trustees' rules manual. In particular, to consider the repeal of Rule 6H-X23-4.17 titled Credit From Nontraditional Sources. The trustee, we have, let's see.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just to provide some clarity, because we haven't had a rules hearing for quite a while with this board. So the board of trustees' rules do require the administrative work of, of the board through the Florida statutes to advertise and change a rule. The board of trustees' procedures are worked on administratively and passed that way. So the materials that the board has is the request to repeal one of the board rules that's become obsolete, is the Rule 6J23-4.17, Credit From Nontraditional Sources. It's antiquated, and the college would like to ask the board to remove it from the board rules and to take some of the procedures and to add them to an existing college procedure. And so that is, that was duly advertised, and now that's before the board for approval.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the rules repeal as proposed?
Seven.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I think we're on to.
President's report.
The president's report.
So we had a really good start to the school year. I do want to talk a little bit briefly about the mask wearing and where, where we are. We did decide to expect people to wear masks indoors when not socially distanced and keep sanitizing the facilities and providing the faculty and the support staff with the tools that they need to be comfortable and to be protected. And so we're doing that. We have had some individuals frustrated about the expectation of mask wearing, and we have some who are frustrated that they don't want, you know, they don't want to wear masks. So it's, it's on both sides. But what we're doing is we're making sure that our employees are safe, providing them with the tools they need to move forward and do their jobs. And we're being flexible as the COVID cases continue to rise. Since June, I believe, since July, we have had 32 cases at St. Petersburg College, and we've been very flexible with the employees on how they do their work, how do we support them in moving forward. We did have discussion at the Welcome Titans about this very issue regarding the mask mandates, and that we are not mandating, but we're sharing that it's strongly recommended and that it is expected that employees and staff will wear their masks indoors. We're doing all we can to protect our people, bless you. And so that's where we are, and that's my report. I said enough earlier.
All right, very good. The next meeting will be September 14. Well, there's a discrepancy here. I have epicenter in here and seminal on this one. What's that? It's epi, yeah.
I said epi.
Yeah. So September 14, 2021, 9:00 AM, right back here. Do I need a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Very good. Motion passes.
Congratulations.
You got this.
All right.